Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. I will call to order the City of Grand Terrace City Council Special Meeting of March 1st, 2016. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and every government, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hussey?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Present.
Mayor Protemble, please.
Present.
Mayor McNaboe?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. So, tonight, we have no present -- we have no special presentations other than what we're here for tonight, and we have no consent calendar. So, we'll start with a public comment, and this is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on items on the agenda only. And at this special meeting of the City Council pursuant to California law, the City Council will only be taking public comment on items listed on our agenda. Are there any requests to speak forms? Is there anybody that would like to speak at this time? Okay, so I'll close public comment and come to our one item on the agenda, which is the pavement management plan report. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Sandra Molina, Community Development Director. Madam Mayor, I'm just going to do a brief presentation, and I'm going to then introduce our consultant from Interwest Consulting Group, Mr. Theron Rochen, who will present the findings of the pavement management plan. But back in September, the council approved a contract with Interwest Consulting Group to do some work for the city. One of those items included the pavement management plan. And what that involved was Interwest going out and inventorying our streets. And the purpose of doing that is so that the City Council and the city and the community can get a sense of what our pavement conditions are like today, where they should be, and how do we get there. And so with that, just very briefly again, I want to introduce Theron Rochen. Oh, and council, I have put up on the board the two exhibits that were in the pavement management plan report. One shows existing conditions of our streets, and then the other map shows the conditions of the streets if we continued with our $200,000 year maintenance fund. And those maps are also over by the door for anybody that would like to go see them during the workshop. Thank you. With that, Theron?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Again, Theron Rochen, I'm a civil engineer with Interwest Consulting, and I sincerely appreciate that your attention this evening to present probably one of the biggest infrastructure investments you have in the city. We did a replacement value cost for the streets of Grand Terrace, and it's over $34 million. So, it's something, it's an investment that needs to be monitored. And that's what this study did. We utilized software that has developed the deterioration of pavements. They collected data in the nine-barrier area counties over several years, and so built into the software, it can predict what the condition of the pavement's going to be over time. And with that, you can run scenarios of budgets and the types of treatments and kind of come up with some results of, okay, if the city wants to invest this much, here's the condition of your pavements after five years. If you invest another dollar value, here's your condition. So, it's a very powerful tool. And what it does is it integrates the best management practices of industry. So, it's not just the nine-barrier counties. It's something that's been growing for probably 15 years now in this software. What we did is walk all of your streets, and we did a visual assessment of the condition of the streets, categorizing the type of distress and the amount of distress on the streets. And that gets inputted into the software system. Also, while we were out there, we did an inventory of your handicap ramps throughout the city and noted any damaged curb, gutter, and sidewalk, and I'll present that data as well. So, our agenda tonight is I was going to walk through the various treatments that would be in the city's toolbox for pavement maintenance, and then present the data of your current condition, and as Sandra said, what the condition of your streets would be in the year 2020 with your current funding. Then we run through some other scenarios of funding increased. And then finally, we are going to present some recommendations that your council can take. I really would like to look at this as a workshop setting, so please interrupt with questions. I'd like to have a dialogue about your streets. So, with that, let's get started. Oops. Go back there. And if I advance it this way. Okay, so what is a pavement management program? It's an assessment tool for your assets, and it does have an inventory of all the conditions of the streets. We rank them based on a 0 to 100 scale. Zero, pavement condition index, or PCI, is a completely failed street, and 100 is a brand-new street. And you can see there's different colored bands in between there. You can also use this tool to record when you do various pavement treatments. That way, you can have a real-time assessment of where those pavements are. And as I mentioned, you can run these scenarios of future conditions and with budgets as well. And it also, the system also suggests the types of treatment and when those treatments should be placed, and it also has costs associated with it. So, it's a very powerful tool for the city staff to make those judgments. I think the most powerful tool is it's the objectivity of this. Often, I'm not naive, I used to work for Sacramento County. Pavements are political, absolutely. But this has an objective assessment of what streets and when they should be placed that at least you can use as an initial framework for discussions. So, this is the typical deterioration of a pavement. It's interesting that pavement's life, 75% of its life, is in the good category or better. And when we do a treatment, when it's in the good category, it's very low-cost. There was an Amco commercial, Pay Me Now or Pay Me Later. Do you remember that? Or, you know, if you're going to do some maintenance on your roof, these are low-cost treatments that save you money down the road. But as the pavement deteriorates, it drops off very quickly. And now, you're in a range where you're spending $12 for the pavement maintenance treatments. Now, those treatments kind of run the gamut, and I'm going to walk through these various treatments shortly. But this gives you the concept of a preventative maintenance program, where you are setting aside some of your budget for preventative treatments on the pavement, even though they're in fairly good condition. And I know that's hard sometimes when you're looking at a backlog of other streets that are in poor condition. But a combination of both is probably a very good approach. So, these are the various treatments that are out there. And I have photos that will follow. But you have joint and crack sealing when the pavement's in pretty good shape. And then you have surface treatments, a slurry seal, and I'll walk through that. A slurry seal costs about $88,000 per lane mile for a two-lane road. Okay, just in round numbers. Then, as the pavement deteriorates a little bit more, you have thinner overlays and patching that can run about $1.5 million per lane mile for a two-lane road. As the pavement starts to age harden and it starts to lose its structural integrity, you may need to apply a thicker overlay on that pavement, say, 2 and 1/2 inches. That can run $400,000 per lane mile for a two-lane road. And then, when you're in the scenario where the pavement has completely failed, you have pumping of fine materials through the subbase, it has no structural integrity any longer, you have to reconstruct that roadway. And I'll show you pictures of that. And that unfortunately costs about $1.1 million per lane mile for a two-lane road. So, we really want to preserve, we don't want any of those roads getting into that reconstruction mode.
Mr. Rochen?
Yes?
When you're doing a visual inspection of the roads in the city, how can you tell if one needs to be reconstructed?
The amount of distress and the type of distress. So, if you've got hairline cracks, you know, that's in the good pavement category. But if you've got what we call alligator cracks, where you have subsidence, you have evidence of pumping of fine materials coming from the road base through the pavement, now we're in that reconstruction. And then, the amount of it on the road as well. If it's an isolated area, then we can do a patch in there. But if it's widespread throughout the whole corridor, now we're categorizing that whole road as a reconstruct.
Okay, so you don't have to take a core sample of that to know that it needs to be reconstructed?
Well, once we get into the design phase, if we've made that kind of threshold decision, then the city would, I would suggest, take core samples of the pavements, also the, what's called an R-value test, or the, it categorizes the soil condition underneath the road on its ability to support the road.
Okay. Councilmember Wilson?
I think what the mayor's alluding to is we have a lot of streets in this city that are in areas where there's a lot of steep grade. And with the steep grade, it changes the characteristics of how the base and the subbase behaves with, let's call it scour. When a trash truck goes up the street, when a fire truck goes up the street, makes a turn, when it's hot outside, and so on. And a lot of these roads were also put in during the county timeframe.
Yes.
You know, most of our newer roads are 35 years old, plus or minus. The rest of them were put in the county timeframe, and knowing the way the county does stuff, it wasn't unusual for them not even to put any base down whatsoever.
Indeed.
So, without having any kind of drilling involved or any core samples involved, I'm just not super confident by looking at the top of the pavement, you know, how we're going to treat it. Because there, I know, for example, in front of my house, I've got some stuff over the big 106-inch line, and it's corroded pretty bad, but yet that particular street's being shown as a 78, you know, rating. And I don't think I'd agree with that, because unfortunately, we had very little control when Griffin put that road in over that compaction. So, without the core samples, I don't know what we're doing.
Well, this is a high-level look, system-wide within the city, to make budgetary judgments. Then, certainly, you will have to do engineering analysis for that particular street that you select to design the overlay thickness, to see if we are on that cusp between an overlay and reconstruction. Or frankly, sometimes, even though the pavement looks like it needs an overlay, we can't afford it, so we want to do a slurry seal or a chip seal on it just to preserve what we have. Those are choices that are made. But this is, this tool is to allow you to look system-wide to kind of make some budgetary decisions.
I understand. Well, a few years ago, a prior city manager, who was an interim city manager, made a decision based on pretty. It was like putting lipstick on a pig. Because they did Barton Road, and that was a county road, obviously, because of the timeframe. They went through and put a bunch of, you know, slurry on it. And at the time, I asked the question, "Why are you doing this?" And it was with the intention of making it look pretty. We don't want to throw our money away.
Indeed.
Makes no sense.
Mr. City Manager?
So, Mr. Theron, just to kind of go back to what you said earlier. So, when you are looking at the road, you're looking at whether it has signs of distress. And so, even if the base isn't the, what we would call, a recommended thickness under the road. So, if you decide that the road has some distress, and you're recommending that it fall into one of the categories that you listed earlier. For example, you said $88,000 per mile for slurry seal, $25,000 per mile for chip seal, $400,000 per mile for overlay. If you get into a road and you're actually doing a reconstruction or an overlay, and you see that it doesn't have the amount of road base that's recommended, then that would ultimately increase the potential cost for the reconstruction or the project, right? But so, on the very high level, what he's saying is that the appearance of the road determines what level you're going to treat it at. So, if the road doesn't have any cracks or anything else, you can do the slurry seal to preserve it at its current condition. But once it shows signs of stress, and we think that the number might be 1.1 million, but if Councilmember Wilson's correct, and there have been sort of shortcuts in terms of the base of the road, our 1.1 million number is going to be a little bit different and higher.
Thank you, City Manager. And actually, I would say, in addition to that, if we look at that and we see that indication that the road's either been flattened or we see some, you know, some holes or other damage to the situation, it would, there's a possibility that the entire road condition itself could be as a result of something dropping out from underneath it.
Indeed. You mentioned trench, utility trenches. That is a notorious problem, the presence of water. So, if there's drainage next to the road and it's not being conveyed away from the road, that can be a big problem. I also wanted to touch on your point about how you inherited a lot of roads from the county. So, this was more rural back then, and the character of traffic has changed. We now have the on-demand FedEx truck. We have the green waste truck and the recycling truck. We have, the larger the gross vehicle weight, the more impact on the pavement that has. And so, likely, the standards that the road was built to back when it was the county don't meet today's traffic loading at all. So, that's one of our recommendations, is perhaps we should reexamine the improvement standards of Grand Terrace, and at least we can assess going forward for new roads, are we building them right?
Thank you, Mr. Rochen, for the interruption.
Oh, please, and I encourage it. So, these are the various maintenance treatments. So, when you start seeing, I mentioned earlier how water, the presence of water is the chief culprit of pavement deterioration. When you have a crack in the road and water gets down into the base, it starts to migrate the fine materials underneath the asphalt. And then, when that truckload comes along, a void is created, and now we've got potholes and other things like that. So, getting out there with maintenance crews and filling these cracks with a crack seal material is a very low-cost, simple preventative maintenance treatments. When we start to get into the digouts and replacements, you can see here they've ground out a section of bad pavement, and they're putting new asphalt in there. So, this is in the pavement condition range of, say, 87 to 68. You'd be looking at these types of treatments. The next one up is a slurry seal. Now, what a slurry seal is, it's almost like a sunscreen for the road. When you start to get age hardened and the asphalt starts to become more brittle, it becomes susceptible to cracking. And so, what this material is, it's an emulsion of oil and water and sand, and it gets spread onto the roadway, kind of like you were mentioning, Councilmember, on Barton Road. Give them a black pavement. But really, what it's doing, it's preserving that oxidation from continuing on the pavement. And it'll add life to the pavement. And there's kind of two tiers here. The slurry seal is a little less expensive. A newer technology called microsurface, it has a little more sand in it, a little more heft to the thickness that's placed in there. A little more cost going with that as well. So, that's in the PCI range of 47 to 67, these types of treatments. Another treatment that's available is called a chip and cape seal. Now, a chip seal is when liquid asphalt is sprayed down on the roadway, and it fills all the cracks, and then rock chips of uniform size are rolled into that oil and pressed into it. And really, the rocks are just simply a driving surface, so it doesn't stick to the membrane of asphalt that you put down there. But it seals up the roadway. And what a lot of agencies will do will then follow this chip seal with a slurry on top of it to make it smoother for bicyclists and pedestrians, skateboarders and the like. I will say, a lot of agencies tend to shy away from chip seals on residential streets because the process has a lot of sweeping and excess chip initially. But I will say that with a cape seal, if someone went away, say, on a Monday and came home on Thursday, they think they got an overlay. The finished product is really very good. So, again, we're transitioning here, so now we're in that 47-67 PCI range. And now, we're into the thinner overlays and thicker overlays. Thin overlays above 47, structural overlays when we're in PCI range of 20 to 46. And when I say structural, that's usually 2 and 1/2 inches of asphalt concrete on top of it. One of the challenges with that is with each successive overlay of the pavement, the cross slope of the road starts to grow, and so you get an increased slope. We grind next to the lip a curb and gutter, and kind of, but sometimes, if you've had several overlays on a road, that cross slope becomes a little more objectionable, especially at a signal where you have cross-traffic going through at a green light. So, sometimes, agencies will have to completely mill the entire pavement to bring that down to the right elevation. So, just something to note on that.
Mayor, may I just jump in just for a second?
Sure.
So, just to point out that when you're talking about those scores, you're now in the area of, anything under 50 is rated as a poor road. So, that's just a reminder to, as we talk about this. Because fair is right under 80, I mean, under 70 and at risk. And so, as you went through these things, it's very important that you're talking about at-risk or poor areas versus anything above 70 is actually in the good to excellent category.
Good point, Mr. Duffy. Yes?
Mayor, may it be called upon?
Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you. Sir, I have a question. The street that I live on, which is Dickens Court, maybe about 20% of the street actually had, it collapsed from water damage, but the other 80% of the street is absolutely fine. So, when you look at a street similar to mine, and it's rated like 75 or something on here, how, when it's blended street?
Yeah.
I don't know what terminology is, but when it's a street like mine, what constitutes the overall rating?
Yeah. What we try to do is the people in the field try to get a representative area. We break the street into segments, so a cul-de-sac would be one segment, certainly. But they do a 10-foot wide by 100-foot long area, and they walk that area, trying to pick something that represents the entire street, and then categorize the types of cracks and severity of those cracks. And that's what gets input into the software system. So, it should have picked up that, hopefully, the person that was in the field bridged over the trenched area or the damaged area and the good pavement to try to collect all of it. So, it kind of averages out.
Okay. So, is there a line from where it was collapsed?
Well, what concerns me is the "hopefully" part. You know, I think we need something more than "hopefully."
That's how they're trained. I should say that. Yeah.
Well, and the other important component is, as the report indicates, it goes from street to, from sector to sector. So, I was out on Pico today, and I was on Pico on, I want to say, the east side of Michigan. And I was, I had looked at, I had the book with me just to check it out. And because we have a new development going in, so one of the things I was thinking that maybe we could partner with the new development to do some improvement, because the rating was 33. But on the other side of Michigan, it was rated 75. So, I was looking at how they're sectoring it out. And one of the things we want to do is we're developing an access spreadsheet so residents can type in their street name, and they can figure out the rating based on the sector in between years. We'll have that up probably by Monday. It should be online and ready to go.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
I guess I'd like to also point out that if there are isolated areas, potholes or something, that's something where the citizens or anyone should contact the city and get that into the work order system, you know. Let's fix those isolated areas, so. And then, lastly, I wouldn't say this is at a 20, but I had to find a bad piece of pavement. So, just to give you some idea, you can see there's been some prior maintenance treatments. There's been some patching on this. But basically, when you see that the structural integrity of the road is gone, we're looking at full reconstruction. And I'll show you some pictures of what's involved in a full reconstruction of the pavement. It's, we don't want to get there because there's impacts to utilities, there's impacts to access during the reconstruction, that kind of thing. So, let's walk through that program. So, first, the pavement, existing pavement and the subbase below it has to be pulverized and mixed together. And then, we add cement to that pulverized material. And then, they mix and grade it, compact it up. And you can see, that would be very, now, at the end of the day, it will be compacted enough where folks can get in and out of their driveway. But challenges with mail delivery, garbage delivery, even trips during the day, you can do half the road at a time, but it's, it has been done, but it's very challenging. And then, finally, they pave on top of that recompacted material. So, you're building a deeper structural section to support the new asphalt that you're putting on top of it, so. The other thing to be aware of is the current law with the Americans with Disability Act require for certain treatments, you have to upgrade the handicap ramps with the project. It can't be something that's deferred. So, for slurry seals and microsurfacing, you don't have to do the upgrades to ADA. But for chip seals, overlays, and full-depth reclamation, you have to upgrade the ADA improvements along with the road. And that's a, oh, probably past, that was, started to be enforced about five years ago, and it's had a tremendous impact to the budgets for various cities and counties as you go forward. So, that's not in the budget scenarios that we presented. I just am pointing that out. So, here's some of the results of, Grand Terrace has quite a few residential streets compared to a lot of other communities that we've done studies for. So, you can see, we have, in terms of centerline miles, we have arterials are a little close to four, about 10 miles, a collector, and 26 miles. You can see the residentials are almost 60% of your streets. And then, we break down the pavement condition. So, the arterials are in the 60, collectors 65, and then the residential streets at 57. Overall PCI for the city is at 59, and we're right at that border, you know, of the at-risk. So, this is a very busy chart, but what this is trying to do is show your overall network and the percentage of the streets that are in, oops, I beg your pardon. So, those that are in the excellent category, about a third. Another third in the fair, about 23% in the poor. And then, we've got about 7% in the very poor category. And again, we're going to try to focus on, the best management practices are to keep those streets from getting into the more expensive poor category and preserve the third that you have. I will point out that the overall PCI for Grand Terrace is not out of the norm. The goal of the nine-barrier counties in the software that's developed is to have a PCI in the 80s. That's a lofty goal. It's an expensive goal. But you're not alone in your overall pavement condition. A lot of cities and counties have similar results and are A lot of cities and counties have similar results and are facing the similar issues with lack of funding and such. With the way the gas tax revenues come, it's difficult, it's not keeping pace. Also, you are blessed, however, with Measure I that has an allocation for pavement maintenance. I think there's only nine counties in the state that have a local sales, or a region-wide sales tax for pavement, and so that's, that's very good news. So I know this map's kind of difficult to see, but in the report, it has color coding for the condition of the street. So this is your current condition. You know, we do have some red streets down there off of Pico, as the city manager was mentioning as well. Also, up in this area here, there's some red streets, and then there was one over in there as well. But just a visual is a great way to kind of get an overall assessment of the condition of the city streets. So we ran some scenarios. Now, working with staff, we had an annual budget of $200,000 a year, so the software allows us to put in that as an annual maintenance cost, or maintenance treatments. And what the system also calculates is what your deferred maintenance costs are by year. And you can see where the trend is going up from 6.9 to 10.9. It drops off in 2014 because the software only allows you to accumulate funds to build a whole project. So that's why it, there wasn't, it kind of, we truncated it in 2020. But the bad news is, with the current budget, our PCI in Grand Terrace is dropping from a 60 to a 53 in system-wide with the present, and your deferred maintenance is growing to $10.9 million in 2019, or about $46 million in total. And again, that's the utopian PCI of 80. So in the year 2020, we look at what is the, what is the system with your present funding source, and more reds are showing up, more, more green streets have turned to yellow. So again, it's a snapshot of the present funding source and kind of where we're going to be with the present funding scenario. So we also, oh, so here it is. If you had unlimited funds and we wanted to get to that utopian goal of 83, this is what you'd have, the system is recommending. So we would have 1.1 million in preventative maintenance, those slurry and chip seals, and rehabilitation would be 6.1 million in the first year. And that's the overlays and reconstruction. And then you can see, the system says, okay, we've done our preventative, we're going to focus more on the rehabilitation. And then you kind of get down to this where you're spending $5,000 annually for your preventative maintenance and your, you know, fairly reasonable number, nearly half a million dollars annually for the overlay. It's, well, I say not unreasonable. It is hard to come up with that delta in the funding, and we'll give some recommendations on that. We also ran the scenario, if you doubled your current budget of 200,000 to 400,000, what does it do? Your PCI still goes to 55 as opposed to 53, and your deferred maintenance is still trending up, but it's not quite as bad. And then the report ran one other scenario where we triple the funding of $600,000 annually. We get our PCI up in the year 2020 to 57, still trending with the deferred maintenance. And then, so here's, kind of summarizes the budget comparison. So current budget in the year 2020, we're at 53. If we double the budget at 55, and if we triple the budget at 57. It's not stellar, you know? You'd like to see more results, but this is just a five-year snapshot. Hopefully, over time, those will trend toward improvement. We also ran a scenario that if we wanted to, if the city, say, set a goal that we want to keep the PCI straight as it is right now, what would the investment be? And so the system ran that, and we have $338,000 in year one, doubling that roughly in year two, tripling that, or doubling it again in year three, and then it starts to drop down to $946,910. That's just to maintain what you have right now for an overall pavement condition citywide. So as I mentioned earlier, your overall pavement investment, replacement cost is about $34 million. The National Asphalt Paving Association recommends that on maintenance, you should spend at least 1.5% of the replacement value annually. So that's about $510,000 annually. That's just kind of a rule of, a rule of thumb. So also, your roadways provide vital public transportation, multimodal use, the delivery of goods and services. Well-maintained roadways are critical for the local economy and frankly, are a source of community pride. And with the present cost budget that's there, you're never going to reach that preventative maintenance mode where it's not very costly and you continue on that way. So something has to be done to kind of address that so we don't get into that reconstruction mode. It takes more investment. So some of the recommendations that are, we presented in the report is, the city should decide what is your overall PCI goal, or identify a minimum annual funding. At minimum, we're suggesting to increase the funding to at least maintain the PCI level that you have right now. And use this pavement management report to develop strategies and kind of have this concept of preventative maintenance in the back of your mind, that that's something in your toolbox, that we want to preserve what's out there. A lot of agencies, it is the worst first, and frankly, I can understand that approach. But sometimes, a combination of worst plus preventative maintenance is, really seems to be the sweet spot. The system also recommends that you survey your pavement every two to three years, arterial, residential streets and arterials and collectors every three to, I beg your pardon, your major streets two to three years and your residential three to four years. And then whatever you do with treatment, you input it into the system so we can kind of have a real-time understanding of where, where things are. And then frankly, we need to find some other funding sources for pavement, and we have some recommendations there. So the first one is, and this isn't in any particular order, a truck route permit fee. So the way this would work, it would be a fee based on the businesses that generate truck traffic for deliveries and in a delivery of goods and services. And there's a way you can calculate the impact of that, of that truck traffic and have an ordinance that would collect those, those impact fees on the businesses. I fully recognize that that works against some of the business growth and things that you might want to do, but I'm just throwing out the things. Apparently, you already have a fee that's associated with your waste collection, so that's, that's a good thing. Earlier, Mr. Duffy was talking about talking with development and seeing if there's some ways to get them to participate in, when they tack on to an existing pavement. And really, that's done through updating your improvement standards and updating any ordinances. So you can improve your, change your improvement standards to condition the developer to overlay to the centerline of the road. You can also have them, you can look in our improvement standards and beef up the structural sections so you're building, going forward, you're building the correct structural sections. And then also, in your development fees, maybe it's an area-wide pavement impact fee. And you can do those studies to have a nexus to the pavement impact and the fee that's collected. But, but these are all further studies that would have to happen. Also, a trench cut impact.
Mr. Rosen?
Sir?
Councilmember Wilson had a question for you.
Yeah, there's one other item I'd like to add to that list, and I'd like to go on record for it. I believe that it would be appropriate for us, any road that is over a certain traffic index should not be allowed to be open cut. It should be bored. Because we have a patchwork quilled on most of our main roads.
Yep.
And it's only because, you know, there's this thought pattern out there that if you go out and you do your road overcut by about a foot on each side, then try to put it back together, it's all baloney because you can never get the compaction quite correctly enough to weather 35 years' worth of road traffic on it.
Indeed.
So if we, if we make them bore the roads like the, like Caltrans does, then we wouldn't have to worry about quite so much damage.
Yeah, with, with a trench impact fee, and I did this when I was chief engineer of Sacramento County, I brought to council a stack of studies that were about this high that showed no matter how well you restore that trench, or even put a T in that trench, you have weakened the adjacent pavement. And it goes out to, at about a 45-degree angle from the bottom of the trench. So there's a cost to the city associated with that trench. So what we did is, we had two things. We had a trench cut moratorium that said, if we overlay a road, we're not going to let you trench into that pavement for three years. We were, we had to be willing to share that overlay plan at least six to eight months in advance and be willing to push it out if the utility had some other plans in place. But then it was under a moratorium. And then, no matter what happened, if you trench into the road, we linked it to the PCI rating and you can, and the depth of the trench, and we could collect so many dollars per square foot of trench. And that was earmarked for pavement maintenance. So that would be a study that could be done. I will tell you, it becomes very political very quickly. The utilities like to say that their rate payers are your taxpayers, so, but it's not a foreign concept. A lot of agencies have the trench cut fees and the moratorium. Another, this is a little out of the box, but pursue a city of Grand Terrace sales tax earmarked for pavements. You could cobble it together with some other, you're smiling. Cobble it together with perhaps some other issues with that, but that's been successfully done in some jurisdictions. Also investigate the Measure I allocation and other revenues that the city has to allocate toward pavement maintenance. So it's more of a prioritization, I would say. Here's one, a third rail, put some general fund into road maintenance, at least initially, to address some of the backlog. I know those are hard choices to make. Also, out there, you could do business assessment districts, improvement districts, or citywide assessment districts. Again, it's part of that, what's important to the, to the citizens and, you know, if they can, with confidence feel that that assessment is going to go toward improving their quality of life and better pavements. Little story on this, each major road in a city has a federal classification, and those are eligible to receive federal funds. The municipal planning organizations, in your case, Sandbag, usually puts out a call for projects for maintenance, and, and it's a competitive kind of thing. Having a pavement management system is a really good way to distinguish yourselves from other agencies. But I spoke with them, and this isn't in our report, what they said was, what Measure I passed, they took a board action that said the RSTIP, or the Regional Surface Transportation Program, was going to be kept at the Sandbag level. And they were going to use that to cobble together with other, other federal funds to fund regional transportation projects. So the cities, City of Grand Terrace or the Sandbag region is kind of unique where you're not getting the gas tax, federal gas tax monies based on your allocation of lane miles and things like that. It's sitting at, at Sandbag, but they are using it for regional projects, and one of them is the Barton Road 215 interchange project. There's a host of grants out there that the city could be pursuing. One is the use of rubberized asphalt, and they have $10 per ton for overlays. For chip seals, I believe it's a dollar a square yard. It's a competitive grant. Also, the other grants that maybe are installing curb gutter and sidewalks, safe routes to school types of projects, that might have some pavement maintenance along with it as well. And I think I'm going to let Mr. Duffy talk about the I-Bank opportunity as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Prota. Before you do that, I was looking recently, and I haven't heard a reporter here, we got one-time money from Sacramento for roads?
I'm not, I know there was some discussion about doing that, I have to go back and check that out.
Yeah, because it was on the, it was allocated and all that, I saw it on the website, so.
I'll check that out.
So I just want to make sure that's included.
I wonder if that could possibly be some, they passed measure, bond measure for, what was it? And there was some residual, and that might have been a one-time allocation. I'm just speculating, but that could be what it was. There were some statewide bonds, I'm not sure though.
And I think in terms of the, the infrastructure over the I-Bank, what Theron was talking about is that the state actually has a program, I-Bank program, that's separately funded program, that if you can identify that you have a funding source, they will advance you the money over a period of time. So for example, we know that we have about $50,000 a year in funding from the VERTEC contract. So we could go to the I-Bank and a couple of other state agencies and say, we would like to get an advance on that and get half a million dollars for the next 10 years. They would advance us that money, we'd pay a very small interest rate on that, and then we could do a major program or slurry seal program, something all at once by leveraging those funds. And so there are a couple of programs that we will be, we will be examining as we move forward and bring that back to the council.
Mayor Prota. The I-Bank, I administered, I actually wrote up the grants and administered those for the special districts of the county. It's very excellent, you get below market rate, and I prefer it because I, we have some funding streams we can look at to be the debt service on that, don't want to do a sales tax. Not opposed to doing some general fund, but what do we really have, kind of thing? Don't want to do assessment districts because I think we really, I think the culture of the city is that we really want to keep government as efficient as possible, and then when we start doing all these overlays and special assessments, kind of lose the confidence of what we're really doing. So I really like that approach.
I should point out too, in the software, the projection of costs, it does have a 3% annual inflation factor and a 5% interest rate. So, you know, those costs accumulate as time marches on, so I wanted to point that out.
So the numbers that you've shown us, take that into account?
It, they do, yeah. So earlier the better, I think, is the, the point. It costs less now, although who knows? I mean, gas prices have dropped, that certainly has an impact on construction costs. But now, you know, so it's hard to have that crystal ball, but these are conservative.
It has an impact on, it has an impact on construction costs, but then we get fewer dollars in gas tax money.
Indeed.
Mr. Councilmember Wilson?
And then just to confirm, everything that we do in that range, we have to do prevailing wage, so I'm assuming that's all prevailing wage numbers that we're looking at here.
Yeah, like I said, the, the system draws from the nine Bay Area counties and all prevailing wage, yeah. So the other thing we did was we inventoried the ADA ramps, or lack of them, in the, in the city and the damaged curb gutter and sidewalk locations. We inventoried 540 locations, and even though there may be a ramp there, it may not be compliant with the current standards of ADA. It's been kind of a moving target. 461 locations need improvements, and we put a cost to that. It's $837,000 in construction cost. There still would be design. Many locations may require additional right-of-way, so just something else to kind of put into your capital improvement program. So just something else to kind of put into your capital improvement program. Also, the city is required to have an ADA transition plan, or at least a self-assessment. And what that's saying is that you have inventoried all the locations, and you have a plan to develop that. And you've worked with the disabled community to help prioritize those locations. There is the veiled threat from the federal government that if you don't have this ADA transition plan, that federal monies can be withheld on various grants and things like that. So I'm just pointing that out. We also inventoried the damaged curb gutter and sidewalk. We found 62 locations, and so we provided the city a spreadsheet based on street address where these locations were. And not too bad, 62 locations have some damage. Construction costs around $40,000. And in talking to staff, my understanding is that your insurance may have programs where they would pay for those improvements, because ultimately it helps their exposure by insuring the city. So that's something that can be very helpful. So with that, any input, direction, questions? We're happy to hear.
Any further questions at this time? Mayor Protem?
So this chart is saying we have 200,000 available for roads out of our budget.
The chart is indicating that we currently allocate $200,000 a year for roads, yes.
Didn't I hear a presentation somewhere that indicated we had a couple million dollars?
Yes, and so what we're talking about is money that we currently have right now that is free to go toward road improvements. So in addition, we collect well above that, but in addition to that, we have fund balances that -- about $2.5 million in fund balance. Now, some of that, they're all special funds. Some of that is required to go in certain areas. And one of the things we'll do is we'll come back with that $2.5 million, and we'll allocate that to say, here's what we can fix. For example, Spring Valley Ranch was an impact fee for $197,000. So if you look at the chart, you'll see Mount Vernon, right now, is pretty much green, but under the five-year scenario, it starts to change color. So is there something that we can do with that $197,000 to program that in, to minimize that road going down? So there are a couple special funds that we have that equal the $2.5 million.
Councilmember Wilson?
I'd like to direct my questions to the consultant there. Did your computer program also consider traffic indexes?
It classifies the street, so it'll have residential, arterial, collector, thoroughfare streets. So with that, traffic kind of goes with it, but it's kind of empirically based in that.
Okay, so in a large, in a broad brush situation, it figures that, which is better than not. It would seem to me that it would be interesting, and maybe I'm just waffing at a dead horse, but have we ever, in the history of the city, in our investigation, had a pavement plan, maintenance plan?
Yes, I actually stumbled on one of them in one of the files. I don't think it was to this particular level, but there was an assessment done, and I pulled it a little bit forward. I did see a consultant study completed.
And what year?
I think it was the 90s.
Oh, that's right. Wow. And this is, I think, another choice opportunity for us to look backwards at, or look backwards and forwards at pavement abusers. When it comes to the boring moratorium situation we're talking about, we had some recent work that was done that was pretty serious stuff, and even with that, we had a limited amount of punch, a limited amount of legal ability to be able to force the people that ruined our pavement to be able to repair things. Fortunately, one group actually did do an over-pave on a good portion of Barton Road, but other past situations have not been so kind. So I think anytime, from a public work standpoint, anytime anybody is coming hat in hand to our city, then they want to break into the paving, whether they think they have a right forever or otherwise, I think it's worth it to us to even mount a fairly healthy strategy against any kind of unpaid-for abuse. I think it's interesting that we've had large, you know, heavy truck traffic on our main streets for at least 35 or 40 years, and we had absolutely no program to be able to recover any of that cost. There's one I can think of in particular, but we have a lot of pass-through traffic as well, but most of those are light cars. But when we're looking at semis or duels running down through the street and delivering, you know, groceries and so on, that's a lot of weight and a lot of turning.
Indeed.
And we've had no way of being able to recover the cost for that. Thank you.
So am I hearing, Councilmember Wilson, that you'd like to have an opportunity for staff to come back and look at a truck route permit fee possibility?
Absolutely.
Okay. And Mayor Protem, you were suggesting investigation of regional surface -- oh, actually, no, we already have that one. The I-Bank loan?
Uh-huh.
And the Cal recycle grants? Are you interested in that?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I'm trying to find Michael Coleman's tweet on it.
And we're looking at trench cut impact fee as well. What other direction would we like to give staff to come back with?
Mayor, I think the item J, investigate current use of RSTP funds that are intended for pavement maintenance use?
I think Mr. Rochen did that prior to coming to us. Is that true? You spoke with Sandbag about that and found that they use it for the regional projects, right?
Yeah, what it would take is a coalition of cities going back to Sandbag, saying, we want to revisit this issue.
Councilmember Hussey?
So you're all right with the ideas that we've come forward with?
Okay, Mayor Protem?
I just wanted to add the handicap thing. I wanted to kind of triage that, whatever we could afford to immediately remedy, and what we could get in grants that would assist us on that.
Okay, and just to comment on that, because one of the things, he talked about the handicap ramps, but he also talked about the $40,000 in exposure that we have for concrete damages, which we should probably make that one of our top priorities, because a little damage in the concrete can lead to big losses.
Right. When I saw that number, I thought that was something we could do immediately, and then especially if there's an opportunity to have JPIA help us with that. Councilmember Mitchell?
I'm satisfied with what we discussed. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
And just looking at the target of the payment management index, I'd really like to butt up as close to 70 as we could, depending on the sliding schedule of where we're at and how far we can go out on the limb on debt service or augmenting. I just don't think it's beneficial to be at fair all the time.
Oh, to put our money towards staying where we are right now?
Yeah.
Just be like this.
So you're proposing 70? How does the rest of the council feel about that? Councilmember Wilson?
I'm sorry.
PCI 70?
I'm sorry.
Mayor Protem is suggesting that we target 70 as a PCI index number average?
I don't have any opinion one way or the other.
Okay. Councilmember Mitchell?
I'd like to see the funding sources first.
Okay.
I like the idea. I like what the thought process is there, but I think we need to see what we can.
And his condition on the funding.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Hussey?
Yeah, I agree. You know, we would see where our funding's at before we get, you know, it'd be nice to have 70, nice to have 100, you know?
100? I like that.
Yeah, I want to go back, but.
Pave our streets with the gold.
Yeah, just redo the whole thing. So like Councilmember Wilson said, you know, since I lived here, it seemed like every time they did do street repair, that I swear, it'd be like the next week or something, they're cutting into trenches and doing utilities. And, you know, I like the idea of three-year waiting, you know, because I just look at like we just spent all that money, then, you know, all of a sudden, they're working on it. So I really like to have it established, you know, that we get with the utility company and, you know, be on the same page before we deal all that.
I agree.
You know, we need to see what our budget is, you know, just, it's nice for the pie in the sky, but we have to also eat what's reality on our plate, and so.
Councilmember Mitchell?
We did discuss the truck route permit fee as part of the --
Yes.
Staff's going to come back.
Staff's going to come back with that, yes.
Thank you.
City manager?
Yes, Mayor, so one of the things that this project also did was that we will actually be left with the software to run the different models. And so what we can do is we can go back and we can program in that $2.5 million, what we can program. In addition to that, we can also incorporate the, what the impact of the I-215 Barton Road will do to our overall ratings, because there'll be a significant part of Barton Road that's going to be improved as part of the process. In addition to some improvements on Michigan and a couple of sides, which are the other side of the freeway. We'll incorporate those things in, and as Theron said, to get to the 60 number, we would need to have about $600,000 over the next four or five years. I think if we actually program in some of that $2.5 million and look at, every year we have had a fund balance in gas tax road funds. And so having this plan in place, now we can program as much as we can and come up with what the potential new number might be. So we can certainly do that, and I think the best time for us to do that is to come back to the council during our budgetary hearings, and we can incorporate that so the council can make those decisions. We'll work on moving forward with that.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Is there a possibility, is it the APT grant that funds like circulation and additional activities for the community to keep them mobile? Wasn't it the workshop we just did like six months ago?
Active transportation grant?
Yeah, those are primarily focused on bike lanes, pedestrian, transit stops, things like that. But with those, there might be a slurry on the adjacent lane, absolutely.
That's what I'm thinking, maybe could we also look at that, have staff look at any funding opportunities there that we can come back and maybe add a bike lane or do some enhancements to, look at additional funding?
Absolutely. And so we actually have, you know, we were awarded the APT grant.
Right.
And then there is another grant of thus construction, and that's going to be out coming soon, too. It's the.
The Safe Route to Schools?
Safe Route to Schools grant.
Weren't those a couple million dollars each or something?
Yeah. So we'll incorporate all of those availability. We'll come back with what our actual resources are, how we program them, and I-Bank and all the other things. We'll also talk about the other funding sources like the APT and RSTPs.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments? Mayor Protem?
I just have a question. So the jargon is RSTIP?
Yes.
So, yeah, because I guess, I'm just guessing, that we'd be having to intricately figure out what's regional and what's fair share local when we visit that with Sandbag?
Oh, I think I have a listing of that.
Okay.
That I can share with you.
At least the local portion of it.
And Mayor, may I just, because Theron, I think it's very important to understand or to at least confirm this. So under the current format in which Sandbag is using those funds, how much of those funds are actually being used on the I-215 intersection? Because it may be a significant amount, far above what we would achieve under a separate scenario.
Well, they backed out all the state money that was there, since the state of California has put a moratorium on any further construction at this point, and so they needed to find other funding sources, and that is going to be federal money.
So before we decide to go after our share, we need to understand if we're actually getting a lot more of our share. Maybe it's the conversation we have after 2019, when the I-215 is completed.
Yeah, I'll show you the table that we received that shows each of the cities and how much they receive funding-wise. And it doesn't take into what goes into regional, but there is a portion that's paid to each city. Anything further, Mr. Rochen?
No. Thank you for your time and attention. Much appreciated.
Thank you for your report. I appreciate it. Anything else from my colleagues? Do you want an official vote to receive the staff report?
I think that'd be great.
All right. Have a motion to receive and file the staff report?
A motion.
I'll second.
Okay, and you have enough direction, and you will come back to us with the funding scenarios as we discussed. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes. Five ayes. Councilmembers Hussey, Wilson, Mitchell voted aye. Mayor Protem Robles voted aye. Mayor McNamara voted aye.
Okay, thank you. Again, thank you for the staff report, and I appreciate those of you who have come out tonight to listen to our pavement report update. Thank you to my colleagues, and at this time, we will adjourn. The next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, March 8, 2016, at 6:00 p.m. Agenda item request must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting. Issue, and we will conclude that item. Oh, we have one more comment. Mayor Protem?
Well, thank you, Dennis Kidd, because when we were talking about Pico Park, everyone would just say, well, it was named Pico Park because of the street. And I just want to, I'm not endorsing your position, but I was on a state parks commission, and Governor Pico's house is in the Whittier area, I guess, or? And I should have known that, because his adopted children are Robleses. So it was kind of, so thank you for setting us straight on the history of the street. Thank you.
All right. Our next item is a closed session, and we will be recessing to closed section to address public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, title, City Manager. Thank you to all of those of you who came out, and if you are not here when we return, we will be having our next regular city council meeting on Tuesday, February 9, 2016, at 6:00 p.m. right here. An agenda item request must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting. So at this time, we are on recess to closed session.